Okay, we'll call the regular meeting of Ketchikan City Council for July 18, 2013. Your Honor, please call the roll.
Bergeron.
I rest in peace.
Kuz.
Here.
Harris.
Right.
Carlson.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
West.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Constitution, and justice for all.
You know, I mentioned to Carl this week, best summer in ages, and you guys can't even see it because you're all boxed in. I think we should do this every year if it will happen.
(laughing).
All right, that brings us down to communications. We have on the table a resolution. Does everybody have a copy of that? For Terry Robbins?
Rose.
Rhodes, I mean.
Is Terry Rose there?
Yeah, you bet.
Terry Rose, like you did this evening.
Oh, you bet. We'll move on to something else until he gets here, sorry. All right, Carl, also on the table you have the selection of exterior paint. Is it this one here?
This is the one that we're recommending.
Yeah, right on there, okay. So, they're gonna move ahead with the exterior, which I think will match up everything really well. Otherwise, if you have a complaint on it, get it to the management before he orders the paint. Otherwise, I have no problem. Communications, also we have-
We've got a lot to choose from here.
All right. I think that was it laid on the table. Persons to be heard, Kathleen, first in line.
Good evening, I'm Kathleen Light. I'm the Director of the Arts Council. Just a quick update on what the Arts Council's been up to. In June, in the Main Street Gallery, our exhibit was Down to Earth with Figures. It was a solo exhibit by Jill Mantz. It was all ceramics of various human figures and was very well received. We had 301 people. We also had Boom Ball Dance Hall and Square Dance in the gallery that month. In July, we've been very busy. Everything happened. But in the Main Street Gallery, our exhibit right now is an exhibit by Diane Nab. It's called Muse, and it is a retrospective of her work. And this will probably be the last time we'll be able to see this artist's work in this community in one fell swoop. As you guys know, the Nabs will be leaving town in the fall, and so two very important leaders in the arts world will be leaving Ketchikan. So if you get a chance to see Diane's show, I strongly encourage you to see it before her artwork leaves town. We had 130 people at the opening, and her exhibit will be up until July 26. We've also already had a Boom Ball Dance Hall and a Square Dance in there. We also hosted the Prince Rupert delegation for the Borough Mayor reception, which was really nice. All of the delegation came in, went through the gallery. We talked about the Arts Council and the Arts in Ketchikan, and then they had conversations about the economic development the two communities could work together to develop. On July 4th, working with the city, we had extraordinary collaboration with the city public works, streets and maintenance folks to take the Jones Yeltatzi salmon, the old carved salmon, through the parade. This was an idea of Keith Smith from The Chamber. It was a genius idea, and we were able to execute it. And we had old cars to take the family and a big Cadillac to take two daughters of Joneses through the parade, his two daughters, and they just, they loved it. The family was ecstatic. They felt very honored. And they were, the salmon was then taken to one of their family members' homes. So it was retired in a very honorable and respectful way, and I thank the city for making that happen. It was exceptional. Also, on July 4th, we unveiled the new salmon on the creek, Terry Pyle's piece. And I'd like to thank Bob Severson, who isn't here. He's becoming the KPA poster boy for unveiling public art in Ketchikan, but he did a fabulous job, talked about his experiences with Mr. Yeltatzi and repairing the salmon and the old salmon, and what the public art does for our community. So it was a great event. Lots of people showed up, and again, many, many thanks to the streets and maintenance folks and to public works for putting that together. It was a pretty special thing to watch them transfer the salmon from a truck to a little tiny dolly down Creek Street and then put it on the stand. That was pretty exceptional. So those guys did a great job. We released the call for, the call to artists for the new rain gauge down number two right here, and that's out everywhere, all over the, everywhere I could get it. Every artist I know has it. So we're really excited about that call. It's the biggest one for one single art piece that we've done, so we're pretty thrilled. Many thanks to Steve Corporon for helping us get that logical and all those technical things together. Our next big thing is the Blueberry Arts Festival. Again, thanks to the city for closing Main Street. That really makes it pretty special for Blueberry. It also makes it very safe, and so we appreciate that. This year, the, since there's no library down here, and the Pet and Doll Parade usually ends at the library, we're gonna instead this year end at the fire department. So we're really excited. We'd like to thank the fire department for hosting the Pet and Doll Parade. Wells Fargo's gonna donate cookies, and we're gonna come straight down Main Street to Tongas and then to the fire station. And they'll be able to crawl on the fire truck, and it'll be cool. So thanks for that. We'd also this year like to thank the police department for helping with the safety of traffic. We've had a little bit of problem in the past. People just sort of get anxious at the end of Blueberry, and it's not very safe. And this year, we had a great conversation with the chief, and we're gonna work out some logistics, so it's much safer. There's tons of opportunities for everyone in the community to participate in Blueberry. So if any of you wanna be in the beard contest or race a slug or put some artwork up or anything, you're all very welcome. T-shirts are available. The new t-shirts are in. They'll be available on Monday. Members can pick up their t-shirt, their pre-orders, and then non-members can buy them on Monday. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
Are you gonna be able to use that parking lot over there where Dawson's here hanging out?
We have a Plan A and a Plan B.
Okay.
(laughing).
Leave it at that.
Yeah, we're working it out. The city's being very helpful in helping us figure out what to do if Dawson isn't able to consolidate and constrict themselves up to a smaller space. So we have a plan if we can't get into the parking lot.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
All right, any questions for it? No, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else want to address the council tonight? Seeing that and seeing that Terry's here, we have a laid-on-the-table recommended motion. We have a motion. Resolution 1325-19, recognizing Terry Rose for his years of service at the Ketchikan, our KPU Electric Division.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to approve Resolution Number 13-2519, recognizing Terry Rose for his years of service at the Electric Division of Ketchikan Public Utilities for the City of Ketchikan, and establishing an effective date.
Move it in second. Tim, do you wanna come up and read the resolution?
Did you want to present the certificate?
You can present it to Terry right there after you're done reading. Terry, why don't you come on up so we can all see it?
What happened?
You can't hide.
That's all I can say.
Go ahead, Tim.
Your Honor, council members. A resolution of the Council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska, recognizing Terry Rose for his years of service at the Electric Division of Ketchikan Public Utilities for the City of Ketchikan, and establishing an effective date. Whereas Terry Rose has been employed at the KPU Electric Division from June 16, 1997 to July 31, 2013, as senior skater technician, and whereas Terry Rose was uniquely and eminently qualified to perform duties well beyond those of senior skater technician by virtue of his degree as electrical engineer, his FCC commercial licenses in general class radio with radar endorsement and global maritime digital distress systems, and his passion for all things electric, and whereas Terry Rose in his capacity as skater technician for the Electric Division did early on transition the utility from an aging radio frequency-based skater system for the remote activation of electric service devices to the digital world, and whereas Terry Rose did further school himself in the esoteric ways of Novell and Linux operating systems so as to superintendent the design and implementation of the OSI Digital Skater System that serves as the electric nervous system for Bailey operators, and whereas Terry Rose was the designer and architect of the radio frequency repeater module atop High Mountain, making possible reliable command, control, and communications for electric divisions during scenarios, routine, and emergency. And whereas Terry Rose did assist in the maintenance of radio and skater equipment for the Ketchikan wastewater and telecommunications divisions, and whereas Terry Rose did well and with authorization assist the maritime pursuits of members of the Ketchikan community over the years as the only local expert authorized to repair seagoing radar and emergency equipment, and whereas Terry Rose has represented the best interests of the citizens of Ketchikan and has been a dedicated and committed member of the KPU Electric Division, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Ketchikan as follows. Section 1, the Council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska recognizes and commends Terry Rose for his dedicated service and significant contributions to the KPU Electric Division and the community. The Council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska wishes Terry Rose success in his future endeavors. Section 3, the resolution is effective immediately upon passage and approval. It was passed this day and approved the 18th day of July 2013.
Before we vote on it, do you wanna say anything?
(laughing).
Turn towards Andy so he can get a good picture. Hopefully it works.
(laughing).
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Call the roll, please.
Harris.
Aye.
Kuz.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Bergeron.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you for commentary and thanks for all your effort and work.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us down to consent agenda. Items 5A and B. Do you have anything you guys wanna add to the consent agenda? I was going, I was thinking 6A1 since it was in second reading. Otherwise, I was gonna let everything else there since there's not much there. Anybody have a problem with 6A1? 6A1.
6A1.
6B1, excuse me. Second reading.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to consent? We'll move.
Second.
Move it in second. Matt, can you read the items, please?
Approval of the minutes, regular meeting of July 8, 2013. Resolution Number 132516, municipal assistant funding from the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation, state fiscal year 2015 municipal matching grant program for water and wastewater capital improvement programs, showing by road, water, and sewer mains replacement project. Resolution Number 132517, municipal assistant funding from the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation, state fiscal year 2015 municipal matching grant program for water and wastewater capital improvement program, Chatham Avenue Water Sewer and Storm Drainage Replacement Project, exempting the procurement of telecommunications divisions T700 soft switch annual maintenance and support from TACWA for competitive bidding requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. Ordinance 131730, master services agreement between the City of Ketchikan DVA, Ketchikan Public Utilities, and City West Cable and Telephone Corporation, second reading.
All right. No questions? Call the roll.
West.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Aye.
Harris.
Aye.
Kuz.
Yes.
I think that passes unanimously. That brings us down to new business on item 7A1, change order 1, contract 1238A, city hall exterior and interior renovations Dawson Construction. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the City Council to approve change order Number 1 of the amount of $51,716. It's a contract Number 12-38A, city hall exterior and interior renovations project between the City of Ketchikan and Dawson Construction Incorporated, authorizing funding from the building maintenance division, city hall siding and roof replacement capital account, and direct the city manager to execute the change order on behalf of the City Council.
Move it in second. Sammy, you have anything to add?
Is Morgan here?
Morgan?
Just a couple of quick questions is all, Mark. First of all, what was the hourly rate for the guys that removed or did the acid washing or whatever that was?
It appears that was $73 per hour.
Okay. And so this change order is just about doing the chemical stripping, and what did it remove exactly?
So, the change order is to change, basically it's addressing the lead paint without disturbing the asbestos beneath. Yeah. And the initial plan had been to sponge blast the surface of the building, and once it was determined that there was asbestos beneath, then we needed to switch gears and use a different method. The plus side was that it eliminated some side damage that may happen from sponge blasting, because there's a gray cementitious coat across the front of the building, sacking across the front of the building, that had the potential to come off a little bit differentially. So the finished surface will actually be very, it'll be ready for paint. The unfortunate side effect is that it's more expensive, it's more labor intensive.
Well, we had a little bit of a credit due back from, what was it, asbestos abatement or?
It was a credit because they only did a portion of sponge blasting. So, we got 33 back.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
All right.
Ready to vote.
Call the roll.
Bergeron.
Aye.
Kuz.
Yes.
Harris.
Aye.
Olson.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to one, or seven to nothing. That brings us down to 7A2, budget transfer Ketchikan Gateway Borough Hopkins Alley revitalization plan grant agreement. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to approve the Hopkins Alley Revitalization Plan Grant Agreement between the City of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Gateway Borough. Authorize a budget transfer $12,500 from appropriated reserves, the general fund of the Streets Division's 2013 Hopkins Alley redevelopment plan capital account, approve funding from the Streets Division's 2013 Hopkins Alley redevelopment plan capital accounts, and direct the city manager to execute the grant agreement on behalf of the City Council.
Do we have a second? Move it in second. Matt, do you wanna add anything?
I think it's a great idea that both agencies are getting together to look at the future of that area and help the area prepare itself for future, whether it's tourism or other business.
Yeah, we talked about this during that budget time when Mr. Ferry came here, and this will also look at his concerns and our concerns.
Well, I also just wanted to say I really appreciate his input and his kind of driving force behind this to kind of get, kick our butts in the gear. Anybody else, Dick?
Yeah, I know Councilman Severson was concerned about taking this out of general fund reserves and was wondering if it wasn't appropriate that we could pull it from CDP. It is going to lead to a benefit for the tourists down there, and I'm not, I don't, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but if it is, it would seem like it would make sense to do that.
Carl, we talked about this during our head tax committee talk. What's your rationale for the general fund?
From my perspective, Mr. Mayor, we don't know what ultimately is gonna happen down there, and we don't know whether it will eventually evolve to a tourist destination or not. That's our hope. And when that does start to materialize, I think you can make a stronger argument for the use of CPV funds, but it's totally a council call. If the council wants to use CPV funds at this time, that's your discretion.
Sam?
Hey, Carl. What do we have? I thought all of our CP funds were encumbered, or do we have some that we can use?
We would have funds available, yes. If the council is so inclined, we can do that.
Anybody else?
Just a further comment. I, to me, the CDP funds, if we've got them, would make a little bit of sense in the planning effort, because it leads to it. If we get into some high-heavy constructions, then I'm not too sure how far I would feel comfortable about CDP money, but the planning effort seems to make a little bit of sense to me.
Do we have a motion to switch it to CPV funds?
I'd make a motion that we substitute CDP funds for general funds.
Do we have a second? Hearing then, we'll go back to the main motion. Call the roll.
Kuz.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Aye.
West.
Yes.
Harris.
Aye.
Olson.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing. Brings us down to item 7A3, fire and EMS dispatch services for North and South Tongas service areas. Do we have a motion that we can talk about?
Move.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to direct the city manager to negotiate an agreement with Ketchikan Gateway Borough to provide fire and EMS dispatch services from the North and South Tongas service areas, based on terms and conditions as determined appropriate by the City Council.
Move it in second.
Mayor, do you mind if I call up Chief Scher for a couple of questions?
You bet. Chief?
Frank Scher, Fire Chief.
Thanks for coming up, Chief. I think we've had this discussion before, but percentage-wise, how many of the fire and EMS calls, borough-wide, are, what is the percentage that are tourism and visitor-related?
I can speak to the, to the city fire department's runs. It's approximately 25% of our total run volume, 50% of the runs when the cruise ships are in town. As far as North and South, we had a discussion during some of our talks about Alaska Shield when we were looking at that, and I believe they said that they had a couple runs out North and a couple runs out South that were cruise ship related. So they do roughly about 150 runs a year each. If you figure they each have three or four runs, the percentage isn't real high out North or out South, but it's pretty high in the city.
Okay. All right. The reason, thank you, Chief. The reason that I, that I brought up that question, I mean, CPV funds were brought up in the last agenda item as a possible to use those for the, I think that this is a legitimate home for CPV funds. I don't know so much for the borough side, but I think on the city side, I think we have some opportunity to use some funds there going, you know, if we wanna budget that down the road. But looking at this thing and the name that I see, that the manager seems to think that my suggesting of funding one FTE was probably a little more than the borough would go for. Why don't we try for, split that and go for half of an FTE?
I'll do whatever the council wants to put on the table.
Sure. So, what is that, 35? Let's see, that's 80, that's $40,000.
Yeah, awesome. I don't know, did you guys get the email from Councilmember Severson?
I did not.
He sent me one. He also is, you know, right now we're, I brought up, you know, the 16-4, which was what they said they could get the services from somewhere else. Bob isn't comfortable with that. He was thinking 20 for the North, 20 for the South, so 40,000 also. But he wanted that reflected at the meeting, that, what he was thinking. To me, whatever the council so wants to do, I have no problem with the 16-4 and start from there, but whatever you guys wanna do. Anybody with some?
Two comments. One, Sam brought up the CVP money for our part of that, and before I could, I think that's not a bad idea, but I need to, I need these numbers on a piece of paper. I wanna know what the total calls are, who gets them, where they go, and everything. Because all I'm getting is just stuff floating around. So, and then I think we can talk about it. That's all I question. I guess the thing running through my mind, and I'm sort of with Lou, I was looking at just starting off with $20,000 on the borough portion or whatever we're gonna charge him. And I would just make a motion that we prepare a service agreement for $20,000 for North and South Tongas, and that's total.
Total. Do we have a second for $20,000 for both North and South?
Second for discussion.
Okay, and a second for discussion. Dick, do you want to add anything else?
No, there's a figure out there, and I don't know whether anybody likes or dislikes it, but it's a place to start, at least ways in the beginning to get this thing settled for a while. And I personally think that our 911 system and dispatch is a little bit of a mystery, and there's a lot of things going on. What is, what's receiving a 911 call, and what's dispatch, and I think we need to understand more about it, and what really goes on, because that, the attorney's explanation last time, anyway, it led me to have some feelings that I think that there are two of them are married together. You don't receive a call without dispatching. That person that takes that call calls somebody and that thing gets dispatched. Maybe it goes to Fire Chief and something goes. To me, that's dispatching. But anyway, I think $20,000 is a fair figure to start off with, even though I believe our whole system is gold-plated, and so I'm not arguing that right now.
Anybody wanna add anything? Matt?
Frank, looking through your packet, I came back to this email you sent to Manager Amalon stating that the service areas are going to have, if they go up to use Keen Eye, they're gonna have to get some additional equipment?
Yeah, that was a conversation that I had with Chief Rydean out of South Tongas, who did most of the research, talking to the other communities, and Keen Eye was one of the ones, from what I understand, they were the ones that actually made an offer. And talking to him, they would need to get some additional computer equipment, some modems, and do some work on the High Mountain repeater to make that type of a system work. So it's not just the ability just to have the calls transferred somewhere and make it work for what they're charging them. There was some additional equipment that was gonna be needed.
That the borough would then have to maintain, update, and maintain and keep.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Sam?
Well, I think that there are, the additional costs to be borne, and the maintenance costs borne by the borough for the equipment should be added on to that cost as far as, you know, negotiated. And we have some significant costs here. I don't think it's unreasonable to, to, and Chief, one more quick question. How many FTEs do we have that man this 911 system? How many people work it?
I'm probably gonna turn this one over to Alan. It's always in his area up there, but I believe it's him.
Alan Vanguard, Chief of Police. We currently have eight full-time dispatchers, two temporary, and then a dispatch supervisor.
Those are some pretty significant costs to maintain our EMS. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for more than $20,000 for this. I think that, I mean, 40, I think, is on the low end, and I would hope that the council would move in that direction.
Do we have a amendment to increase it?
Well, we have a one to four twenty. We gonna vote on that one, or?
We can amend one.
If you guys wanna make amendment, I mean, if you guys want it higher or lower, I just need amendments.
I move to amend the dollar amount for EMS to the borough to $40,000.
Move it in second.
I have a-
Matt?
Dick's amendment was to do 20 for each service area.
No.
Wasn't it?
Both.
20 total? Okay.
But Mr. Severson's idea was 20.
He was uncomfortable with the 16-4, and he was thinking 20. Let's call the roll on the amendments to our app.
Bergeron.
Aye.
Olson.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Kuz.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to one. We shall now have, well, I'll discount that as the main motion, and we'll give that to Carl to go talk to the borough and see where we're at.
Lou, there's only six council here.
Oh, five to one.
I just wanted to run.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna, for the motion that was adopted, that you wanna charge North and South equally, so it'd be 20 each.
Yeah. All right. That passed five to one. Thank you. Oh, I've been saying seven to zero, and I, sorry. I'd say I'm a guy grab, but I get nobody calls or a teacher.
It's the higher math, Lou.
Yeah, I never made it that far. All right, that will take us down to new business 7A4, Amendment 7, 2013-2015 statewide transportation improvement plan, otherwise known as the STIP. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, Your Honor. I move the City Council to direct the city manager to file six comments with the DOT on Amendment Number 7 to the 2013-15 statewide transportation improvement plan as determined appropriate by the council.
Second.
Second.
Dick, do you want to add anything?
Well, I think that the, the manager had a suggestion of comment in there dealing with, it's a little bit hard to track what the comment was, but, or maybe you can explain what the, what is, you wanted to comment, oh, I know, but go ahead.
Councilmember Kuz, my only comment was, it's going to be two thousand sixteen at the earliest, before they started addressing Tongas from the tunnel to Tatsudas, there are several sections of Tongas that I think everybody knows is very badly rutted, and we suggested that you might want to consider asking the state to consider doing some interim improvements down there until they can get to the final repair.
Agreed, especially during the, the area we've been complaining about for the long.
Yeah, and, and I would suggest we do, because I, I tried to talk with Al Paul a little bit yesterday when he was in town with the bridge, and, well, two things to talk to him about, one was trying to take the ripples out of Mill Street there, and I don't know where it's going to go, but I think if we pushed on them, maybe it will go somewhere, and there may be a couple other places, I actually said, you know, some of the patching you're doing in town comes up within a week after you do it, especially at McDonald's, and then I once again in the corner down there, and he said, yeah, our machine has broke down, and I said, well, maybe we've got a machine that heats it up, and maybe we can help you fix the patches, so hopefully, he'll talk to his maintenance guys and talk to us, and maybe we can help him put a better patch on that too, so, whether that can be part of poking on getting the ripples out and also doing a little better job of patching, but I think we need to make a letter to him and he will.
One of the big improvements that they need to make also, when they finally do the big work in two thousand sixteen, is they need to do a better drainage around where the federal building and the old post office is, many times they've seen people get splashed because of the water builds up right there, and then with ice, cold, snow and ice, when people go ripping around there and they're not paying attention to pedestrians, that is awful, and that's been that way since I was a little boy, so I think we, let's take this go around and fix that.
Anybody else?
On that particular topic, because I got another one, if you want to go from there, okay, Shelter Cove Road is mentioned in this, on this memo here, and previously we've talked about the fact that DOT is manipulating the twenty-nine million dollars that the state legislature through bonding gave to them to do Shelter Cove Road, and I think the Shelter Cove Road, looks like it's estimated to be about sixteen million, and I don't know whether that includes the right of way they bought from Kate Fox or not, but they're removing probably in the neighborhood of nine to ten million dollars plus from that job, and personally it bothers me, but I guess they may have the legal right to do it, the way the bonds are wording, but, and I don't know whether anybody wants to say anything to them about it or not, but we could have a better road if we could get them to leave the money where it belongs.
We can have our manager make a note and. Thank you.
We don't like what they're doing, yeah. And then, and then on the other note, is this the time to talk about?
Well, you know, let's do it when we have our comments, if some people want to talk about it, some don't, so let's wait for your comments, talk about, you went to the meeting, saw what you liked and what you didn't, during council member comments.
Next meeting, look, the big issue there is, we're going, we need to approve those comments.
I understand, I just want, during our comment time, if you went up there and looked at it, and you have an idea, at least tell us what you're thinking going around the table tonight, because it is going to be a fast process.
Yeah, because we, the comments have to be in by the thirteenth or fifteenth, we've got one meeting.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to let the council know, I've tasked Port and Harbors Director to bring to you at the first meeting of August, an analysis of the alternatives, and then we can take your comments at that meeting and tonight for that.
Are you going to have your, your recommendation in there, Carl?
I think Steve is just going to lay it out, and if there's problems from the city's perspective relative to the port, we'll outline those to the council and say it's a matter of concern, and then we'll give you our comments, and then you can take them accordingly.
All right, let's call the roll on this one.
Harris?
Aye.
Kuz?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
All right, that passes six to nothing, that brings us down to new business seven B1, Offer of Employment, Telecommunication Division Operations and Engineering Manager, Victor Esposito, is it?
I believe so, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the City Council authorize the General Manager to offer the position of Telecommunication Division Network Operations and Engineering Manager to Victor Esposito of Miami, Florida, based upon a compensation level of grade seven, seven, eight, step T, and an annual salary of a hundred fourteen thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars, annual vacation accrual time fifteen days per year, and moving expenses not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Carl, do you want to tell us about him?
I'm going to ask Mr. Cushing to come up, and he's the one that had the negotiations.
Come on up, Ed.
Ed Cushing, Division Manager, KPU Telecommunications. As noted in the memorandum and in your packet, we've been searching for a new Network Engineering Operations Manager for the past several months, we had a number of applicants, the applicant that rose to the top was Mr. Esposito, he's a very impressive young man, he has an outstanding telecommunications, network engineering and operations background extraordinarily bright, his telephonic interview went extremely well, so we flew Mr. Esposito up for an onsite interview, three other managers and I interviewed him, that was followed by an interview with four of the telecom employees that would report directly to Mr. Esposito, unanimous opinion of the group was we should hire him and hire him quickly, very impressive gentleman. As I noted in my memorandum, he also brought his wife along on the trip, because as you know, it's not a one-person vote, she loved the community, is very excited about relocating here, which is a positive.
Was it raining that day?
Pardon?
Was it raining?
It was the Chamber of Commerce Day, it was quite beautiful the three days they were here, but they're, they've done their research. What else can I?
Marty? Oh, I thought you had a question. Anybody, Dan?
I know I'm always one that brings this up, but. I understand the difficulty in finding trained personnel for these positions, I totally understand it, because I'm fighting just to find office people in town, so I understand the pain that you go through in doing that, but in terms of expenditures, it just is just a lot of money. I noticed that the past person in this position resigned after ten months, what are the contractual parameters around the moving expenses and those type of things, if they're?
The, the moving expense is the standard city relocation policy, essentially the way that works, and I apologize in advance if I don't get the details exactly correct, but my recollection is that there's a three-year period of time, or in which if you leave city employment prior to thirty-six months, you have to reimburse the city for the moving expenses, and I think if you leave within the first twelve months, it's a complete reimbursement, and then after twelve months it starts reducing.
Employee reimbursed, the city, a hundred percent.
Yeah, that, he was on the hook for his entire relocation advance, and the details were worked out with human resources on that.
I, I noticed that this gentleman's currently making about a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and he's willing to take a over forty thousand dollar a year cut in pay?
It's, it's really interesting, and it's, it's, everything is relative, you know, everything's relative, it was interesting visiting with him and his, his wife, because after several days here of them interviewing us and them spending time in the community, they were starting to sound like the mayor, relative to why people should want to live in the Ketchikan, because of the quality of life opportunities, in their situation, they're living in Miami, which actually, from a rent perspective and putting your children in private schools perspective, has some impact on your personal cash flow. In Esposito's case, their daughter's entering the public school system next year, or entering the school system next year, they're not willing to put her in a public school because of issues with the public school system, when they run the numbers, they have to factor in those types of things, in his present job, he travels fifty percent of the time, the company he works for specializes in selling data, telecom data services to enterprise-sized companies in Africa and Middle East, he spends fifty percent of his time away from home, and so what he and his wife are looking for is not only a stable employment, but someplace where he's home, they can raise their family, and someplace with a high quality of life, so those are his drivers.
What was the salary posted for this position? I don't understand the Ts and the Cs and that kind of stuff.
I, I don't know if we posted it at, you know, U, which is the very top of the range, but.
Because you said you have to go up from where it was, so what was the number, I mean, where, where was it?
I don't know that, if I said we had to go up, I don't know what we.
That's why you had to come to the council, because you weren't authorized.
Anything above step I requires council.
Yeah.
So what were your?
So the previous incumbent was at step R or S, I don't recall.
What was that salary range?
Where was the salary?
What was that salary?
One thirteen or one fourteen.
I noticed that the last person in the position left because citing cost of living differentials, lack of pension, cost of living differentials, I mean, that's huge, and I just worry that someone taking a forty thousand dollar a year cut in pay, exposed to the cost of living on an island, is maybe unrealistic.
Everything's relative, I had a long conversation with Mr. Esposito in that regard, because the last thing we need is somebody coming in here with blinders on.
And, you know.
At risk of, at risk of sharing confidences, Mr. Esposito's in a relatively comfortable personal financial situation, his drivers are quality of life, and the opportunity to stay home.
So he'd be willing to take lower salary for more vacation days?
No, no, something that's probably not readily apparent to everyone at the, at the table, is one of the anomalies that were faced with the KPU telecom, is management personnel have eight percent of their salary withheld off the top, it's a mandatory contribution to the 401K, by contrast, the company contributes a generous amount of money per hour to the union people's pension, nothing comes out of the union person's paycheck for that. A union person pays roughly ninety dollars a month for personal contribution for the health and, well, for health and medical coverage, Mr. Esposito, with a wife and a child, will contribute fifty, five hundred and fifty dollars a month for similar coverages, so quickly those management wages, as it relates to personal cash flow, quickly drop down and are pretty close to even with, with the people that report to the manager. Everything's relative, in my thirty-some years of doing management, it's always been difficult, and then someone will come to work for you to make the same as or less than the people that report to the manager, that's one of our, our goals, or one of our struggles, so what you have to do is have those very straightforward conversations with prospective employee in advance, make sure they understand it, and that they are in a position to be able to live with it, and/or have other quality of life drivers that cause them to think, okay, I can, it's worth it, so there you go.
Marty?
I ran into you one evening, were you with Mr., was that when you?
Yes.
You're, he was a very impressive person, I'm really hoping that he would be interested in moving to the community, so, great, good.
All right, Dick?
Yeah, knowing that we're really trying to look for someone who'd be here more than, say, a year, if you look at his employment sheet in the last six, six and a half years, this will be his fourth move?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great point, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, and on a personal level, I can relate, because if you looked at my resume, you'd see much of the same thing prior to my relocating to Ketchikan, that is the nature of the beast with telecom management jobs outside of this community, in Mr. Esposito's case, he was with a very large cable company called Adelphia, he got a promotional opportunity to move to Charter, shortly after he moved to Charter, Charter acquired Adelphia, and then Charter consolidated its divisions, meaning synergies, which in plain English means they reduce the number of people that work for them, so then he went to work for ITC, which was acquired by EarthLink, so then he went to work for IBBS, which was subsequently acquired by some venture capitalists, became a very difficult and problematic place to work, so then they moved to Miami, where he's presently employed, good news is, makes a lot of money, bad news is, never at home, and you've heard the rest. One of their drivers, primary drivers, is to go someplace where it's stable, where he's not gone fifty percent of the time, where there's a high quality of life, and they can raise their, their family in a, in a safe environment, so, you know, there, there you go.
Thank you, Ed. Let's call the roll.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
And Kuz?
Okay, that passes six to nothing, that brings us down to the presentation, which, Ketchikan Energy Conservation Program, let me get back to where I'm supposed to be. Kim, are you going to run this?
I am.
All right. Who's the expert?
IT.
Oh, IT, there you go.
IT's up here, we'll be all right.
It takes a while.
Oh, it's, I think it's going to get, it'll get brighter.
Yep. You can start anytime you want.
Okay, let's see if I can find my cursor. Okay, so back in January, KPU Marketing, oh, sorry, Kim Simpson, Sales Marketing Customer Service Division Head, back in January, KPU Marketing was tasked with the creation of an energy conservation campaign to encourage residents to conserve electricity, to be effective, KPU's campaign has to have several components, one of them needs to be believable and relevant to the residents here, needs to include small actions and changes they feel that they could do themselves, and the campaign needs to be cohesive and consistent, but you don't want it so consistent that it's boring, how do you make it relevant, use real, likable Ketchikan residents who represent the community, people who are just like you, just like me, people who represent a cross-section of who we are, only include energy recommendations that apply to our climate, you don't want to include things on air conditioning, doesn't reply to us, how do you get people to feel as though they can make changes in their energy consumption, make it easy for them to make small changes and let them realize that they are empowered to affect their energy consumption and their energy bills, from here we develop the slogan, which is, I have the power to save energy and money, to tie into the power message, we chose to use Rosie the Riveter-type images using likable local Ketchikan residents, so, oh, do you see the flash? Here we have Kayla Williams, the lovely Kayla, who works for me at KPU, Bill Tatsuda, who everybody knows, and the man of the skirt, Hunter Davis, please notice the I have the power slogan, we're going to utilize this on KPU vehicle, so back on the, back of the electric vehicles, we're going to have mandatory signs that I think my assistant here is going to, we have some samples that you can take a look at, same images will be on the website, the newspaper ads, direct mail, and then our KPU Electric Facebook. So this is the combo image, and on this one, notice we've used the term you have the power, this is to get them to understand that they have the power to save, this takes us to the radio ad, which also plays on the power message, okay. takes us to the radio ad, which also plays on the power message. Okay.
And now, a few words from major powers.
Ladies and gentlemen, you may have heard as I have heard, that we have lost our power to feed the kilowatt uprising. And we no longer have the power to halt kilowatts, sir. No power to take a stand and stop the relentless kilowatt invasions. No power, not on my watch. Thanks to KPU, we are not Sierra Oscar Levan. Thanks to KPU, I have the power. You have the power. We all have the power. Attack these kilowatts and send them into full retreat.
Knowledge is power. Visit KPU Electric on the web or Facebook for valuable tips and information to help you save big on your electric bill. And for even more power, visit KPU to learn how you can pocket up to $50 off your electric bill by simply investing in energy-saving technology. KPU, totally local, simply brilliant.
Okay, so this is the image from our postcard, which will be mailed to every resident on the island. Information on the card instructs residents to purchase the listed energy-saving items, bring the postcard and the receipt to customer service to receive a one-time credit on their electric bill equal to the amount they spend, but not to exceed $50. This will support local businesses by driving purchases of the item to the businesses. And the items we selected are products that will actually help Ketchikan residents. We avoided things like water flow reducing devices and other items that are not relevant to us here. Here is a copy of a magnet. This is gonna be attached to the cover of all 11,000 KPU phone directories. It includes five easy ways to save electricity, and the tips tie back to the energy postcard we just viewed. Heidi's passing out. We have a couple advanced copies of the directory that just came, and there's a copy of the magnet attached to that. Um, newspaper ads will, um, have different energy-saving topics monthly, and we're using these same images, uh, have the ads in the Ketchikan Daily News and the local paper. And that takes us to our website. Uh, we revamped the website to feature 22 easy tips for saving electricity as well as links on the side for additional ways to save. So go here. Here's kinda what it looks like. So similar images right here. Um, all you have to do is you have to click on an icon. So this one here, this is on compact fluorescent bulbs. Um, people can learn how to save. And then they can, uh, close out of that. And we go over to the side. We've got links. We have, uh, one here, for instance, to the KIC weatherization program. Um, up here, we have some links for Phantom Energy. Uh, Phantom Energy loads, that's when you have something plugged in, but you, it's turned off, but it's still using electricity. When Bob was in here earlier, we actually did a check for him on his, and we found out that he could be saving $92 a year by using power strips, um, to, that, for his TV, his DVR, and some of his other electronics. Just turning those off every day would save him $93 annually. Um, right here, I'm blind. Here it is. Here's the virtual tour. Um, on this one, people can actually go, and pardon me, I'm gonna go put our zip code in here. On this one, people can actually take a virtual tour around their house, and they can come up with ways to save money. If they have a mobile home, they would click here. It would take them, um, to some different options. They're just gonna click here on the basement. Um, I'm gonna click on the water heater. And I'm gonna adjust the water heater temperature, take it down to about 118. If I add that, how much would I save? I would save $73 annually by making that small change. So people can just go through the home, click on different rooms, make some different choices, and then that will, um, show them what they can save. Up here is a reference to the, uh, to the postcard. So they click here, they get additional information again, um, on the postcard. Okay, going on to Facebook, um, we're gonna be featuring the different tips every single week. It'll also, we'll have links back to the website to drive people to the website so that they can, um, take the virtual tour. And we'll continue to add to the website as we have additional links. We're hoping that, uh, Councilmember Bergeron may, uh, participate in a video for us on home cons, on, uh, you're looking at me.
I can.
I can. All right. But we, we'd, we'd kinda like to get a weatherization video that we could get up, or doing a home audit that we'd be able to get up on the site. So for $66,000, ClearResult offered to develop, um, energy images and tips for the KPU, for the city, as well as conservation kits. Those costs, however, they didn't include the production costs, which is printing, mailing, paper, only ideas, only art. Um, the ideas were developed by people outside of Ketchikan that don't really understand, um, how our climate is and what specifically, um, how we're different. So KPU Marketing produced this cohesive plan you've seen, uh, including all delivery costs targeted at our specific market, and the approximate cost would be about $40,000. So the balance, about $26,000, um, we'll be able to reserve for additional, um, conservation ideas that arise. Any questions?
No, I like the idea. I mean, the main thing I'm after, and I, I can guess what I'll pull, is actually giving me the tips of what I can do, so.
I was surprised, I was surprised on some of them. One of them, um, that I'm gonna use is when you go on vacation, you can turn your water heater off, uh, uh, and, and not use energy to be heating your water heater. Never occurred to me. And I thought that was a really good one. Doesn't apply to everybody. But there's, you know, definite tips, I think, that everybody can use.
Any questions for Kim, for Jan, and then Marty?
I just think it's a really good start, and I'm really encouraged to see all the different ideas and options. The, um, virtual tour looks like it's a good Friday night, um, activity.
Yeah.
I, I think it's gonna be, um...
You must have my life.
Interesting to see. I, I think you need to come to my house and instruct my husband on how to turn a light bulb off. But I'm, I think it's pretty cool. I mean, I think there's a lot of neat ideas and stuff put into it.
Yeah, we tried to make it, um, interactive and interesting, and not just a, you know, random pieces of paper that people keep getting in the mail. So different, different ways of, uh, getting different parts of the, the community. And we thought also by getting a cross-section in terms of age, it would, you know, it's not just, I mean, it's everybody. There's, you know, everybody can recognize themselves there.
Marty?
I was just gonna say, I think it's outstanding.
Oh, thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, is the website live now?
It's not live. Um, it, it will be very, very soon.
Okay.
I actually wouldn't let them, um, I wouldn't let them move it because I had it stuck to, uh, on a specific link here, and I was terrified they were gonna move it to productive, to full production, and then I wouldn't be able to link it.
Like Jan, it's something to do Friday night.
Dick?
Yeah, have you got any idea of how you can measure whether this is gonna be successful or is doing anything, any good at all?
Um, you, I think initially what we could do, what we are doing is the cards will have people's account numbers. We can definitely go in, you know, by account number and look at, uh, people's consumption, what, what it, if it goes down. Um, and there's, uh, you know, we're looking for additional ideas. I know Energy, uh, not, I mean, excuse me, Electric Division is working on a couple of ideas on, um, and there's, there's other things we can do eventually, maybe the five-star Energy appliances. I wanted to start with something, though, that was, uh, reachable for the general population instead of something where if you go out and you buy a new washer and dryer for hundreds of dollars, we'll rebate. We wanted something that, that everybody in the community could, um, participate in.
But is there any way to actually track if, if our energy consumption as a community?
As a, as a community?
Yeah.
Um, that's, is so dependent on weather and the diesel and so many other factors. We can on an individual basis, based on people that, um, that do turn in the slips.
Can you track how many people are going to this website? Maybe that you said...
Yes, um, actually, that's one of the enhancements with this site, is I'll be able to track how many people go to it, yes.
So if we get two hits, that's not good. If we get 2,000 hits, that's good.
Yeah. And we did it all in-house. We didn't even have the hierarchy solved. Good job.
Thank you.
It's smarter than we do.
And that is that one of the biggest energy conservations that you can do is put in low-flow showerheads and aerators. Cause a large part of your energy bill is, especially is electrically heated hot water. And if you have a 2.5 gallon per minute, uh, showerhead and you put in a 1.25, do the math. And so you get, you have, it's a, like a $10 improvement will save you, it pays itself back in a month. I mean, so that's a good.
We'll look into that. And the people I had spoken to had said that they found that people would, um, actually remove them to the expense of providing those for people. But that, we can add that as an option for people on the package.
There are, there are people that do that, but there are some people that like them.
Excellent. All right.
All right.
Kim, anything else you wanna add?
Nope.
All right. Thank you very much for coming to show. And a great job to everybody in your department. Heidi, if you can hit the lights.
Perfect.
All right. All right. Thank you for presenting that. We'll be looking forward. And, and thank you for using local people. Um, that brings us down to vouchers. Catchcan Daily News for $839.48. So we have a motion.
Remove the four approval vouchers to Catchcan Daily News, the amount of $839.48.
Luded second. Call the roll.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Kuz?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
Wes? Carlson. Carlson?
Yes.
Are you done yet?
Yes.
All right. Uh, that passed at 6-0. That, um, that brings us down to managers' report. Carl, do you have anything to add?
Just that we're scheduled to be here a week from tonight for the budget session, Mr. Mayor.
Correct. We will be waiting anxiously. Are you gonna provide anything ahead of time?
I have a short, uh, memorandum with the information that was requested by Councilmember Olson.
Excellent. Um, anything else? Anybody have any questions on the report?
I believe I've got, uh, two questions.
Go ahead.
One, relating to the next council meeting, we talked about Oceans Alaska being on the agenda.
Correct, it is.
Okay. Uh, the other comment I have is under the telecom report and, and, uh, the results of the telecom outage that we discussed a little bit, uh, last time on July the 5th and 6th, and kind of a detailed report here, which is helpful to see what happened. But, uh, I just wanna make a comment that says here, having no record of receiving outage reported or concern from Councilman Kuz, uh, even though I was affected, they didn't call me back. I have a very good reason for that. I couldn't get the telephone line to work. So I called Mr. Severson, and he apparently had done it earlier than that. So, uh, sort of alluding that I didn't try. It bothers me a little bit. I'll leave it at that.
All right. See, nothing else on the report?
Yeah, I do have one.
Oh, yeah.
I haven't seen any weekly reports in here from Whitman Lake. And I don't know whether it was one interim between last week and this week or not.
There'll be Whitman Lake reports on the next agenda.
Pat?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for getting back the answers on, uh, Firehouse software and also on the outage and as well as an update from the Fish Hatchery. Thanks,
all right. That brings us down to city clerks' file.
And then, Your Honor.
Um, city attorneys' file. Future agenda items. Mayor and council comments. Um, Dick?
Uh, nothing, Your Honor.
All right. Um, Sam?
I caught the very tail leading of the Gravina Access Project, uh, meeting. Actually, everybody had filed out of there, and I cornered the guys that were, that gave the presentation. That's why I shanghaied that map right there for the use of the city council so they can get an idea visually at least of what are some of the alternatives for these bridges. C3, which is the one that goes, it's the two bridge, which is a low, then a high, is hated and loathed by the cruise industry and the Coast Guard, and is double the cost of the other CJ3, um, which is, uh, has its issues as well. Um, it is a high bridge, but it is also a little bit narrow for the cruise ship company's preference. And so, but still, it's like half the money of the other one. Um, it is also the lowest-cost alternative down the road. It actually is less expensive than the airport ferries that we're using now. If you factor in the life cycle of the ferries, replacement costs, fuel, escalation costs of fuel and labor. Um, just to give you a brief rundown of what I was able to glean with my few minutes with these fellows. Thank you so much.
Jan? Pat?
Sam just touched on one thing. I had nothing until Sam brought up the ferries. And I couldn't find it. Maybe it's in there somewhere. But did they ever discuss in there the cost of the ferry system as offset by the fees that the people pay?
I, you know, I've got the thick book, which I'm actually gonna dive into.
I, I just, I, I glanced through it, but I haven't had a chance. So that was my question.
I do not have an answer on that. KJ?
I don't think I have anything. I can't.
Marty?
Um, yeah, relative to the ferries like Matt brought up, um, since the cost is in there for jobs, those are jobs that we're talking about that wouldn't, that would be created, using a ferry, that wouldn't be created with, with some of the other alternatives. Um, the other thing was, we had a small fire at our house, uh, last night. A tree caught on fire. And I wanted to thank, uh, Chief Share for, uh, his personnel rolling out and taking care of that for us. They were there very quickly and, and took care of our bursting into fire tree.
It was a miracle.
I know. It was someone and a cigarette. And thoroughly chastised about that. Um, but they, yeah, they took care of it. Thanks.
So it wasn't the burning bush, Mary?
I didn't hear voices.
All right. Um, well, since we did talk about, or started to talk about this, we do have the meeting. Um, we'll get some info from the city's point of view on, um, how it might affect, um, the harbors. Um, I'm torn between the, um, the two bridges' locations, and I'm going to, um, read up on them. Right now, I favor maybe more of the two, but, um, I'm gonna be talking to some of the cruise ship people and see what, um, their inputs are. Um, it's gonna be an interesting decision, so.
Your Honor, since everybody put their point to deliver, to talk about the bridge, may I?
Oh, yeah. I thought we...
I mean...
I was shocked when you didn't.
Well, no, I thought we were gonna wait till the next meeting.
Oh, no, I said at, at this time of day, you can throw anything you wanna said before. Go ahead, Dick.
I, yeah, I attended that meeting also, and I've talked to them several times. And I've probably been following this bridge for 15 years or better. It's, it finally got to where it is. And, uh, before we lock and load on stuff, there's a lot of advantages to that two-bridge crossing. So this community as a whole, long-term, and admittedly, it is the most expensive one at beginning to build by about $35 million or so. Uh, but as we get into this next time, you need to look at the advantages and disadvantages of those two bridges. First thing is, we need to, we need to support bridges, not ferries. Cause they, ferries are three times the price long-term, like in the billions of dollars. Uh, but the two bridges have some differences, but, uh, if you look at the advantages of land access and long-term abilities for this community to grow, the south, those two bridges on the south end do it now. And I realize, well, some in the cruise line industry don't like it. We've got some pilots that don't like it. But, uh, sometimes, uh, everybody isn't happy. Anyway, we'll talk about it next time.
You bet.
But you need to dig into it if you're gonna talk and tell anybody about it.
Yeah. Um, they had plenty, it seems like they had plenty of people coming through the day up there, talking to people. So I'm hoping to get a lot of input from everybody. Um, also, um, Kim, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for using, um, excellent representatives instead of elected officials. I'll be just getting people making marks on their pictures. So that turned out really good. Does anybody have anything else? I don't think so. Um, do we have, um, motion to adjourn?
Do we have a... No, you wrote about it.
We did. Oh, yes.
That was the same thing. So move. Thank you, everybody. Good job. I'll see you.